Sure.
Should we move?
We want to bring them over.
Sitting here, okay.
Thank you. Okay. Call the meeting to order, the public meeting of the Bronxville School Board. I think the first item on our agenda is to approve the minutes from the last meeting. So, last two meetings, so did anybody have any comments on the minutes that were circulated for the last two meetings?
No.
Can we get a motion to approve?
So move.
Second? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Roy, I think you are up.
Okay, thanks. Welcome back, everybody, again. Our first meeting since we opened school, and I want to let you know that we had a really good opening. Things went along smoothly. Our staff and our students are right in the midst of things already, and dealing with homework and all those fun things that we deal with. So it's really nice to see, and are, hallways are buzzing, so we're off to a pretty good start. New teachers seem to be acclimating pretty well to Bronxville, and they're doing very nicely as well. We had two back-to-school nights that occurred in September already, one for the high school, one for the middle school. They were very well attended, and felt there was a nice positive buzz in the hallway during both of the back-to-school nights, so that was really nice. I want to thank the teachers and the administrators for having everything ready, and for really putting our best foot forward for those evenings. And the elementary schools, this is coming Thursday, so we hope to see a lot of people there as well. We had a very nice 9/11 ceremony that was facilitated by our senior class, involved the Bronxville Police Department, fire departments, emergency rescue people, and it was really well done, so hats off to the students and Chris Doyle for organizing that also. I'm going to have Ann Meyer come up in a little while to talk about high school. I thought one of the things we should, might want to consider, and I'm going to start tonight, even if you don't want to consider it, is to have our principals come up and share about the opening school, things that are going on in their schools that you might want to hear about. So tonight, we're going to hear about, hear from Ann about some of the things regarding the high school and how that's starting, and then we'll bring the middle school and elementary school in at future meetings. But before I do that, I wanted to provide an update on the enrollment for this year. So Connie can get the slides going. So this slide shows you the current overall enrollment compared to where we thought we would be based on the demographic report and the projections that were done. So you can see, it's pretty close, the projections in the current are pretty close. We have a total of 1,644 students currently enrolled, which is about 16 less than the previous year, but it's 18 more than what we were projecting based on the demographic report. We still have that relatively large bubble of students going through the high school. I'll point out that the largest grade is in eighth grade currently, 148 students, so that's going to buzz through. Overall, you can see the elementary school went down compared to last year by 27 students. Middle school actually went up by six students, and high school went up by 15 students from last year. We do have the company coming back in this year to update our enrollment report and demographic report, so we'll keep an eye on that. But again, it's, the enrollment is a little bit larger than what we were projecting it to be. The next slide will show you the elementary school class size report. It's very similar to what you've been used to in previous years. We have an average class size of 20.7 overall. The only one grade that we were carefully looking at was that in fourth with 141 students, and we have 23 and 24 in that grade. The middle school is next, and again, pretty similar. The average class size comes out to be 20.9, last year was 20.5, so we're very similar to where we've been. But one of the things I will point out to you is that over 80 percent of our classes have 24 students or less in the, in the middle school. Some of the larger ones, you would expect, like for example, in chorus and things like that. So we're, I think our class sizes are very, very favorable throughout.
So on this one, there's a science, there's
Yeah.
five science sections or five student, that's five classes of science that have
Classes of science that have somewhere between 25 and 29 students. That is an area that I know Tom Wilson and I have talked about, he's keeping an eye on. It's just the way the schedule had worked out.
And are any of those, like, I mean, are their resources, the physical resources strained, whether it's labs or other things that they need to be doing that they can't do?
I don't think so. We haven't run into that yet at all in terms of the physical facilities restraints.
And art is another one where you have a lot
Five sections, yeah.
So any commentary on how we're handling that?
No, I mean, Tom, you have any thoughts on that?
I'm having art back here.
Talking about the class sizes, particularly in art and science, and if there's any physical constraints that we have, and how we're dealing with that.
The lab portion of science gets a little tricky when you move beyond 24, and the highest section we had is 26. It is something we're looking at, it's challenging, it's not impossible, but we have to look and see how we're using resources, adult resources in particular, in that, in that class. The art class, those that are above the 25, at 25 actually, they, there's really not a problem with resources or room, there's plenty of room in the classroom at that level. And later in the year, there will be some sections of computer that are 26, and I believe that the highest exploratory class is one of 27. That's the highest number there is. With the exception of fourth, which is a large format, one suite. But the science is something we're looking at very carefully. Actually, we had a meeting today to talk about it again, Rick and I did with our counselors, and we're going to do some visits and see.
Is that across the grades or in one particular grade?
In one particular grade, it's in the eighth grade. The eighth grade's very, very high. And I had scheduled things a little differently, but our consultant and campus said that I couldn't just throw an extra class in without warming the rest of the schedule up, and he showed me why. He said, "Oh, take it out, please." And when, when the classes were balanced, they were all full, but there are several sections of 25 and one at 26, and the science made great. That's, that's high for that.
Thanks, Tom. And then we'll go on to the high school slide. And again, similar, if you're looking at the average class size, 18.8, last year was 19.1, so very similar. And majority of our classes are 24 or less, 78 percent of them are 24 or less, but we're running the same situation. There are classes that do, do get up in the 25 to 29 student range that, you know, we have to keep an eye on and do the best we can with it. But as Tom mentioned, when you're running intricacies of a schedule and trying to fit classes in there at Singleton's, particularly at a high school level, it becomes very tricky to balance it all out.
What's the one?
The social studies.
Social studies, Ann, do you know which, what number that is at?
What class?
The one social studies section?
It's at 29.
29, so it's in the wrong category.
It's an AP course, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't get that.
Thirty.
It's an AP course, and I would expect.
It's a sing, it's a Singleton?
No.
Oh, you have two sections?
There's three.
Oh, three. Do you know what the other sections are? Numbers wise? It's all right.
Twenty-seven, twenty-five.
AP Economics.
Any other questions on the class sizes of the enrollment?
Ann, when you get up, can you talk about what the enrollment changes in performing arts have been?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, and at this point, I will ask Ann to come on up to kind of update us on where we are with the high school, and how things are, are starting this year, and the things that she's been working on at the beginning of school.
Okay, thank you. So as Dr. Montesano said, we had a successful opening of school, and I know that both the middle and the elementary school did as well. We've actually only had 11 days of school so far this year, if you can believe it, but a lot has been accomplished, and we have a number of things that we're planning to do right away in the next month or so. So just starting off, on the first day of school, 55 seniors who serve as our freshman transition leaders welcomed about 142 freshmen into small groups into the high school, and helped tour them around and give them an orientation to the school. Since that time, those groups have met twice just to check in, make sure that the freshmen are transitioning, and if they have any questions, they have a resource. We were actually supposed to be taking the whole freshman class and the transition leaders tomorrow to Sharp Reservation, but due to the weather forecast, we were able to switch it to a week from today. So if you have a freshman or freshman transition leader, emails went out, "We're not going tomorrow, we're going next week on Monday." We also, right away at the beginning of the year, had the ninth grade family reception and activities fair. At the activities fair, student representatives from the high school clubs were there to talk to the mostly ninth graders, but also new students about clubs. We have 30 high school clubs, official high school clubs this year, four of which are new, and so we had a huge level of interest in a lot of clubs. The one that had the most interest was actually Model UN, which had 84 kids sign up, and they were very excited that they had to host their first meeting in the auditorium because it was the only space that could hold all of those students. They did a great job, by the way, and they currently have 37 kids signed up to go to the Princeton Model UN in November. They're also hoping to host a Model UN conference here in the spring, which is fantastic, so very supportive of that. We also hosted the 12th grade post-high school planning meeting already, jumping right in with the seniors, getting ready to apply to colleges. And right in October, we'll have a 10th grade coffee and an 11th grade meeting as well so that we are able to preview for parents what to expect in 11th grade. Thanks to the Bronxville Foundation, which is always extremely generous, we have a brand-new TV studio. If you haven't had a chance to see it, it's state-of-the-art, they were just installing additional equipment today. And we have Bronco TV, which is a new course. It used to be a club, it's now a course that's being offered. In addition to that, all the special education rooms were updated, and again, if you haven't seen those, they're really unbelievable spaces, very welcoming, wonderful, flexible furniture, new paint, all sorts of great stuff up on the fourth floor. To your point, John, we have added in the high school performing arts. In addition to orchestra, we now have an honors orchestra. In addition to band, we now have an honors band course, so that students who really want to push themselves have an opportunity to get additional attention in a slightly smaller group, but because of that, we've actually grown the program. So we have over 35 percent of our high school students participating in orchestra, band, or chorus, which I have to tell you, not only is it wonderful, we have so many students interested, but I'm happy they got scheduled into those because it's sometimes a challenge.
So what was that number five years ago in terms of percent, or some reference point in terms of?
I could look that up, I don't have that off the top of my head, but I can tell you, because I, I mean, four years ago, we had 15 kids in the band. And right now, we have, I want to say 57. So the band itself has grown significantly, and maybe five years ago, I'm going to estimate, we had 30 students in orchestra, and this year, we have 60, I think we have about 65. So grown significantly. Also, Mr. Lassane and I hosted our annual grade level meetings. That's an opportunity for us to go through policies and procedures, attendance policies, things like that with each grade level, and this year, for the first time, we're going to be using the Family ID system, the online system, for students and parents to acknowledge that they understand those policies. In the past, we did it on paper. This is a much more streamlined process. We are going to continue working with Challenge Success this year, that's actually 612, so it's the middle and the high school. Last year, we reviewed homework across the high school, a large number of faculty shadowed students for the day, we experimented with the daily schedule. This year, we're going to continue our discussion of homework and develop in the high school a scheduling tool that helps kids understand their homework commitments in relation to what courses they might sign up for. We'll continue the shadowing of students for the day. We're also going to be examining our cheating and plagiarism policy. We know from the data in Challenge Success that students are engaging in behaviors that they know to be cheating, or that they might think, they're, they're not sure if they should be doing group work versus individual work. I think it's time, our policy has not been revisited since 2009, and at that point, there was no Google Classroom, Google Docs, all of this collaborative sharing going on. So I think it's time for the faculty to revisit that and modify the language to reflect the reality of, of what students are doing, and clarify it really, so that everyone understands. In relation to that, we have already audited the process by which students are introduced to citations in relation to plagiarism. Mara has done that from fourth grade through the high school, and we're going to try to clarify that so that we're teaching kids one type of citation process and holding them accountable for that, because it can get, in the high school, a little confusing what science expects versus English versus social studies, so we want to clarify that. And then we have a number, a number of things coming up, but in particular, a group of parents and high school faculty and I are going to be traveling to Boston where Challenge Success is hosting a luncheon in October. They're going to be coming out with a white paper on the college admissions process. It's titled "A Fit Over Rankings: Why College Engagement Matters More Than Selectivity," and they're going to be talking about questions such as, what do college rankings really measure? What is the relationship between college selectivity and student outcomes? And what does all this mean for the high school experience? So we look forward to bringing those ideas back to the school and maybe exploring them with a larger group as it relates to the pressure our students feel, particularly in the high school. So that's a quick overview. If you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Thanks, Ann.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's my report, John.
Great. Dr. Kelly?
Good evening, everybody. I have a number of resolutions for you to consider this evening. The first is in regard to certified staff. I'm asking you to approve our list of middle school advisors. These are teachers who have a full teaching load and therefore eligible for an advisory stipend. They meet in small groups on their grade level twice a cycle and review everything from social-emotional issues as well as executive functioning, study skills, et cetera. Items B through O are all overages, which have been anticipated and budgeted for. P is the revised list of teacher mentors. And then you have before you a leave replacement, some hourly employee resignation and new hires. And I bring your attention to item T. We are piloting for the first time under Jen Forsberg's direction. Students assisting with technology set up for events in our beautiful new auditorium. And these are students who are highly capable and have expressed interest. In addition, we have a few new substitute teachers, substitute teacher aides, and a teacher resident. And then other, other personnel items. We have a side letter agreement with the BTA that has been reviewed in executive session as well as a settlement agreement. We have a resignation and a new appointment of our senior payroll clerk, as well as co-curricular advisors and some after-school stipends. In addition, one new ANA maintenance person, as well as one new Chartwell's food service person. In addition to items A through double H, I have a resolution from the, you want me to do A through double H first?
Yeah.
I got the facial. Could you please consider A through double H?
Can we get a motion to approve A through double H?
Move. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Great. Thanks.
Thank you. In addition, I'm asking you to consider a resolution as it relates to a clerical health unit retirement incentive for this current school year. We've had an opportunity to speak to the leadership of the clerical health unit, as well as the board, and I'm hoping that you will authorize the superintendent to execute that.
Okay, so that's the same resolution we saw earlier. So can we get a motion to approve the resolution?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it from? Dan?
The board has received two preliminary financial report summaries for July and August. Obviously, it's really early in the year to start projecting surpluses or deficits in expenditure columns, simply because we're still finalizing payroll and when we encumber it, we'll have a better idea. That should be next month, but we really don't get a solid picture on that till November, December anyway. On the revenue side, we're seeing positive variances and projectability in regular tuition students. We have one or two more than anticipated, and interest income, I also think, is going to look good for this year. So revenues are looking good, no alarm bells for expenditures yet, you know, stay tuned for a couple more months, we'll get a better picture.
Thank you.
We have some financial action items. Let's see, we're starting with tuition, private, regular ed tuition students and children of faculty. The board approves this list every year. As you can see, there's 10 tuition students, not including our first faculty member who's going to be paying tuition, based on negotiated settlement, I guess, going back five or six years. And we have 25 children of faculty, including that student. So we'll ask the board to accept those students.
You want to do these one by one, or you want to do them all?
No, all together, one, one resolution. Approve the, the attached list of tuition of faculty students.
A, okay, so can we get a motion to approve action item A?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Questions? All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
B and C are two separate contracts for educational services, the first being triennial psychological evaluations. Dr. Martin Roth, who is a retired teacher from the district, has been performing that service for us for a number of years since his retirement. Item C is, looks to be home, homebound tutoring with, who, Martin? The Amerson Center Behavioral Specialists. With, in an amount not to exceed $50,000. And if there's any questions on those, you can direct those to my immediate left.
So how were those services, I guess, procured, procured? Did you compare five, five different offers, you know?
So Resolution B speaks specifically to a regulation that as a public school, we must adhere to, that's called district of location. And what that means is that the public school is responsible for any students who attend private school within our boundaries, so that would be St. Joseph's and Chapel School. If there are any students at those schools that have disabilities and are eligible for an individualized education service plan, we are responsible, our committee on special education. So when that regulation changed, there was no way that we'd be able to absorb that with the four psychologists that we have. So we took advantage of Dr. Roth's retirement, and we contract with him not to exceed a certain number of hours to ensure that we're meeting that requirement. And then C speaks to a behavior specialist. There are times throughout the school year where we may have a student that is in need of highly specialized behavioral services, and we will contract with him to work collaboratively with the team here at school to ensure that the student can still maintain meaningful participation in the curriculum.
Okay. Can we get a motion to approve items B and C?
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Great, thanks.
Moving on to facilities, I want to concentrate my update tonight on a couple of recent incidents. We've had, we had two flood events, or what would have been flood events in the past, within the last two weeks. For the first event, which happened in the early evening, the pumps really didn't work as designed, and in researching why, there was a battery issue, a trickle charger issue that we're working to address. However, the alarms that told us the pumps weren't working, they worked as advertised, so we were able to go out and start one of the pumps manually, which cleared the parking lot fairly quickly once the pump was engaged. So we're working with the contractor who installed those and manufactured them to alleviate that, that issue, and then we had, we were able to test them again about a week later, where we had driving rain basically all day that culminated, that would have culminated into disaster at pickup-drop-off time, but that was averted. We had no water in the parking lot at all, and that was because the first pump did engage as it was supposed to, but again, it was having trouble holding a battery charge, so it didn't signal the second pump, but evidently, that one pump was enough to handle that event. So we're working on getting the system, you know, there's a learning curve for us, and also making, holding the manufacturer to the terms of, of their contract and getting these things working as designed. So we're meeting again with them on Wednesday, and I'll let you know if there's any progress.
Dan, the, the three additional pumps that we're hiring or going to buy, they're with the same contractor?
Yes. Yes.
Any changes that they've been modified, so we don't run into the same issues?
Not yet. You know, the way these pumps work is pump number one acts as a master pump, and the others would be subordinates that would kick in as, you know, certain water levels, or, you know, when the water gets to certain heights in the wet well down below, they would kick in. Once we get the battery issues with pump number one figured out, I'm hoping that they should fall in line. But we also need to learn...needed to learn what to look for. Now, we know to go out and check battery voltage on the pumps, make sure it's above 13 volts, or whatever it is, on a regular basis. And, you know, have a maintenance log, check it, you know, every other day, or whatever it takes. You know, it's only a minute or two. We can handle that. But we're learning what to look for and troubleshoot.
I'd like, John, I'd like to suggest that we get a monthly update at board meetings until we have this solved.
Sure.
Given what's happened in this community, all the dislocation, all the money that got spent, we owe it to people to have a solution and keep pressing the company.
Absolutely.
So we know. And I think we've got to keep reporting
Yep.
Each month, whether you've got a solution or not.
Will do.
And I think, and we've discussed this, but I think until there is a solution, there needs to be effectively somebody on watch when there's a likely weather event.
Now, we have a lot of people on the alarm list now, between both the village and the school district. And also, we're cross-training people who work for DPW at the village and our own staff to just keep an eye on them, manually operate them, you know, because if this happens on weekends, the alarm goes out. If Mike Lee's not around, we need two or three other people who can get there quick. And if it's not functioning as designed, to kick them on in manual mode. But goal number one is to get them functioning as designed.
Well, and if there's a weather forecast for heavy rain at 3:00 in the morning...
Yeah.
Somebody should check the batteries that night
Sure.
Before they leave.
Absolutely.
$2.7...yeah, $2.7 million worth of pumps should function, particularly if they were designed to be emergency pumps.
Sure.
We are talking about the emergency system for the emergency pumps, right, John?
Yes.
Check.
Something like that. But I'm a school...I'm a former school superintendent, not a lawyer.
And it's...
Lucky you.
We're not where we want to be, but the good news is, we had two events that possibly could have resulted in...with water in the building. There was a lot of water, both of those events.
Yeah.
And, you know, we were able to clear it out. One avoided completely, and the other cleared out quick.
No, I think a far worse set of circumstances would have been if the pumps had not worked at all.
True.
But they did.
I'm sorry.
They did. Let's...given all the investment made, let's make sure that they really do function as designed...well, as they should have been designed.
Emergency pumps?
Emergency, yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I also have three action items this evening.
Much bigger crowd, you're right.
The first is a piece of good news. We want the board to approve a bid, to award a bid, to Avanti Building Construction Corporation for $1.665 million for the Chambers Field and Track portion of the large construction project. And this is a really good bid. It's under budget by $400,000 or so. We had four bidders, all really, really reputable contractors, and we've worked...this is the same firm that did Hayesfield, and they were also a low bidder on Hayesfield. And Hayesfield came a little slower than we wanted it to, but quality-wise, I think it came out very well. And we'll work with them on schedule and try and get Chambers Field done as quick as possible. You know, this is...it's kind of an off-time project, trying to get one of these done over the winter and early spring, but we're going to give it a go. Farmers Almanack says this might be a rough winter, but we'll work as long as we can, then shut it down, and start as soon as we can after that. And action item B is approving a construction manager for the overall bonded project, and that is Savin Engineers. The board interviewed three firms. I think the board was comfortable with all three firms. I think Savin stood out, and they were also very competitive with their fee. And the board reached a consensus to appoint Savin. So if we can appoint them tonight, we can get them up and running with Lan, the architects, to kind of double-check their figures and budget projections, and get the large portion of the project up and running as well, so we can bid it out fairly soon. And both of the resolutions authorize the board president to sign contracts when approved by both council and reviewed by the board.
Great. So can I get a motion to approve items A and B on Dan's facility action items?
Well, John, so Resolutions 1 and 2 are contingent...A and B are contingent, right, on there being contracts to formalize? This is just kind of a pre-award approval, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then they will be...the contracts will be reviewed by the board prior to me signing?
Yeah. But it'll be consensus by the board. This is authorization for the board president to sign them. But they'll be consensus by the board, but they won't...I don't think they'll appear before the board again. I think that'll be an offline discussion.
I think we just want to see the contracts.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Hey, Dan, for Savin, was their fee in line with what we had budgeted for the drill?
It was better than what we budgeted.
It was.
So it was a week of good news.
150,000.
It's about 150,000.
So at the moment, we're about...
500-plus ahead?
Yeah.
Don't say it.
You know, we had some difficult news, a couple, you know, with HVAC location. So, starting off the head of the game.
Just going to say, nice to start off ahead. It's going well so far.
The four bids we received from the...for Chambers Field, were those the same four companies that did all four bid, when we did Hayesfield?
I think at least three of them bid on Hayesfield. I'm not sure about the fourth offhand.
And do you remember the spread between the bids coming in? I know these guys were a little bitter, but was the spread as large in Hayesfield? Do you remember?
It was larger in Hayesfield. We were actually concerned, where we did a lot of vetting on this contractor before we worked with them. And then we worked with them, and, you know, we were doing...you know, we have experience with this contractor, so we're pretty comfortable. They've done a lot of work in the area. It has all been satisfactory, including ours. So I think we thought this was good news.
So one question. Will Savin oversee the work of Chambers Field?
Yes, they'll oversee everything.
Thanks.
Okay. A motion to approve...I can't read it, but I think it's A and B, as opposed to one and two.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? No. Great. I do think it's worth noting that, as we start to roll into more of these projects, it's important to keep the website section where you have the facilities thing updated, so the public can check in on that. There is a growing section with the facility stuff, and particularly with the field timing, and when it's coming offline and coming back online and all that. So for the my hometown Bronxville people, it might be good to point people in the direction of the website for that. Thanks.
That's it.
That's it for you? Nothing on the other facilities update?
I guess we are bidding out the playroom ceiling portion of the project within the next couple of weeks, so hopefully...
The gym, the...
Yeah.
Yeah, the ceiling tiles.
Not...no, not the big gym. It was coupled with the field project, just so we could get aid on the field.
Okay.
A small, little piece that can be done over break.
I was thinking, were other action items the safety committee members' approval?
Yeah, so it's an annual appointment by the board to approve the members of the safety committee. You have a list in front of you, asking the board to approve those members of the committee.
Do you want to put that up on the screen, or...yeah. So can we get a motion to approve the appointment of the members of the safety committee for 2018-19?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. And thank you, Tom, for serving in that role for the board. Policy readings?
Yeah, we have the policies that we put on the first reading. We're now up for a second reading. These are the policies, if you recall. We're having our policy reviewed by the New York School Boards Association. These were mandated policies that were missing from our policy manual. So we just want to get them in the books, so now they're up for a second read.
So I think we accepted these for the first time at the last board meeting, and now we're going to accept them again, unless there's a discussion.
It will be considered adopted.
After the second reading, if you vote.
All right. So we need a motion...I guess we can make a motion to accept the five policies identified for the second reading as board policy.
Nope.
He said five.
Five.
Yeah.
We have a motion from Russo. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great. Are there any committee action items or reports coming out? I don't think so. Great. On Monday, we have a long-range planning meeting. You want to talk a little bit about that?
Sure. At this long-range planning meeting, the administrators will be there and update and discuss our strategic plan, and provide information on the implementation plan specifically focused on this year. You'll hear from Mara, as well as the three building principals, how it's being implemented in their schools. So that's the main point of our discussion.
Great. And then we have audit committee and a regular meeting in about three weeks. So at this point, I would like to invite any members of the public to come up, whoever they'd like to add to the board agenda. Nobody? Okay. I think we are done. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nothing from Mr. Katz tonight.